Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the City of Binghamton City Council Work Session. Six P M. Monday, tenth of April, twenty twenty-three. Please stand for the pledge. Clerk will call the roll. Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Resonetti.
Present.
Councilwoman Riley. Councilmember Friedman.
Present.
Uh, Councilman Burns is absent. Uh, Councilman Strawn is absent. Councilman Scanlon.
Present.
And President Skringy.
Present.
All right, that's five here, two absent Burns and Strong.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, at this time, I'm just going to take, uh, some autonomy on the agenda. I'm just going to move out of a family request that was made by Dr. Burling in the Planning Department. I'm gonna ask, uh, if Dr. Burling can please come forward, uh, to present RL's twenty-three dash ninety-one and twenty-three dash ninety-two. Evening, Dr. Burling. How are you? Well, thank you.
Thank you for letting me on.
Absolutely, of course. Thank you for the follow-up. Twenty-three dash ninety-one, ma'am. The floor is yours.
All right, um, we are requesting a continuation of the waiver of the outdoor cafe permitting, um, fees. Um, it's a excellent, uh, initiative that we need to keep continuing. We waived them last year as well. It, um, encourages new applications coming. And.
Really quickly, Dr. Burling, forgive me. Madam Clerk, do we have a volume audio issue or something up there?
All right, all right. I'll start over again.
Uh, thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you, Dr. Burling. I appreciate it. Sorry about that.
You're fine. We're asking for a waiver of the outdoor cafe permitting fees, um, as an initiative to encourage more applicants, um, and to help create a better sense of place for the city.
Thank you so much. Discussion. Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you, President Skringy. Hi, Dr. Burling. How are you?
Fine. How are you?
Uh, I'm okay. So I have a couple of questions for you. Um, I want to first ask. It does the waiver also include the outdoor cafe site plan review?
No.
Okay, only the permit?
Yeah, only the cost, only the fees. We'll still be, uh, reviewing all applications, all renewals. There's.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
You know, there's an insurance requirement as well as any, um, uh, liquor authority licensing for outdoor.
Right. Well, um, I didn't mean, I apologize. I didn't mean would the site plan review be waived, but would the fee for the site plan review also be waived? Okay.
Yep, so the rental, the reviewer fee, and I believe the deposit as well.
Okay. Um, and my other question is, so we've, obviously, this was something that uh, was initiated in the wake of COVID because of the need for increased outdoor space. So I'm wondering if we see the waiver of the fee for the foreseeable future, and if so, why do we keep including it in the fees from the budget? Uh, or do you think that eventually we will reinstate the fees for the outdoor?
Well, at this point, I can just speak for what we know currently, um, that it's recommended that we continue with the waiver, um, to encourage the smaller cafes to apply. We don't have a lot of new applications. We have a number of renewals, um, and the the cost of the insurance can be, you know, fairly high. And so this would help to offset that and encourage additional applicants, we're hoping.
Okay, you said it's recommended by, by who? Okay. So based on what you've seen with the waivers has led to an increase in um, applications for small businesses, and that's something sustainable that you see for the future?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilwoman Riley.
Thank you, Council President. Hello, how are you, Dr. Bird?
Fine.
You? Good, good. Um, so similar to Councilman Freeman, Councilperson Freeman's question. Right now, it states that it's one dollar per square foot. Is that of the, the, uh, existing facility or for the of extension?
Well, that's for the extension. That's for the actual outdoor cafe.
Okay.
And we have a number of smaller ones, and we have a few fairly large, so.
Absolutely. So now for the for look, if we want to make sure there's no emergency. Okay, no emergency. All right, um, so, so my question again, how many people took advantage of this opportunity during COVID? Do you know?
Um, we have about eighteen, um, outdoor cafe permits right now. Um, the renewals, sorry, I'm trying to pull my spreadsheet up. Um, we have just a few new applications, so those all were, the date was in nineteen twenty, or twenty twenties. Those applications, and we have the renewals, um, but at that time when we were waiving the fees, a lot of those were new.
Absolutely.
They're continuing.
Yes, because it was the new initiative, and it was great during COVID. And I think a lot of the businesses, anecdotally, you know, in terms of research, they, they said that it was beneficial.
Right.
However, we have some that may be situated, for example, on Court Street, that may not have the space to expand. And then they're been limited because of traffic and fire safety and things like that.
So they can only extend out.
Or either go around the corner, and, and some were even extended into the street, I believe.
Lost dog.
Right. Okay, so when we think of that, is that then deemed a variance for that organization, and then they are then subsequently waived for the extension? And the variance, or they're waived for the entire footage, square footage?
Well, the whole.
The whole thing is, is waived for them?
They have to submit a site plan of the outdoor cafe seating, um, chart, and the boundary of the whole property.
Okay.
Um, goes through staff level review. If we feel it's, uh, larger than what, you know, we're comfortable with, we'll send it on for COD review, which is a higher level review, but, um, it's, it's a set plan, and so that square footage is measured, even at lost dog. That came out to about, I think fifty-two square feet. So it's not a huge amount of money that we're losing. You know, but it is enough to encourage them to continue.
Absolutely, absolutely. The reason I ask, and I'm sure some of my fellow council members may have received the same, some of the businesses that were interested, again, were not necessarily denied, but because of their proximity to certain corners and access points.
We have never actually denied a.
Really? So that was not true?
We work with them. We work with them to bring them into parameters.
Okay.
And if they can pull their application.
Okay.
They decide.
Okay, okay. All right. So again, this looks like something that will.
I mean, we will deny one if it's unsafe.
Okay.
We have, yeah, we work for the applicant.
But this will show that the city, and particularly, is supportive of ensuring the success of these summer programs, summer cafes for our businesses downtown. Is this only for downtown?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Any, any restaurant is eligible. Um, outdoor cafes are very good for the urban environment. It brings a sense of, um, uh, liveliness, but our concern is safety. And so we always review those site plans. We ensure there's a five-foot clearance for everyone to be able to walk by. Um, there's a very strict insurance coverage requirement that the city imposes, and we have to be added on that policy, so, yeah.
Awesome. Is there a deadline by which, uh, an entity, an, an entity needs to apply to then be eligible for this waiver if it passes?
Um, they wouldn't have to apply for the waiver.
I mean, apply for the extension, this program.
The, the application process opens now, and we, it just stays open. So typically, they apply early to get everything out, and, but we really don't have a cutoff.
Perfect.
It ends, uh, at a certain, we may have extended it to December, you know, but, yeah.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other discussion? Seeing none, uh, Dr. Burling, uh, twenty-three dash ninety-two, the floor is yours.
All right, um, we are requesting permission to accept a grant um, from the New York State Parks, um, Recreation. It's for the, um, recreational trails program, and we're using it in conjunction with a grant we received last year for the same project at Ross Park. So this one will be, um, used to, yeah, create additional trails, to update the existing trails, and to create connections. So mostly not disturbing news new land. That makes sense. It's five hundred thousand, so.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thanks for your work on that. Council discussion? Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you, President Skringy. Um, so is this this program only for the pathways in Ross Park?
Yes, but that's what we're applying the grant towards. That's how the application is written, but.
Okay, um, and so I was also wondering, so the, the previous legislation that was adopted, uh, that's attached here, said the project cost is three hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred. And then this um, says that the project cost is five hundred, or sorry, seven hundred and nine thousand. I'm wondering why has the project cost more than double?
The project is split into three phases. There's three different areas for the trails. The first grant application was for the first phase one, which included restoring, uh, the, the gates, the old gates, and creating a pathway, um, that way to the carousel. And then there's two additional phases that we're now just receiving funding for.
Okay, so altogether, all three phases will cost seven hundred and nine thousand?
Yep.
Okay.
And then we do have to provide a match.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other discussion? Councilwoman Red.
Thank you for that. So again, um, my co-councilperson here addressed the questions I had, so then we will see new legislation that will speak to all phases of the plan, because this then does not match what was.
It is.
Because this, as Councilmember Freeman brought up, only speaks to the total cost being three hundred thousand, and now,
No.
No, 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 the previous resolution that passed.
Yes, that's why we have, that's why we're asking for the second one. Yeah.
With updated numbers that were not.
And that's an additional grant.
Absolutely. Oh, it's a new grant?
We have two grants.
Okay.
The first one was for two hundred and fifty thousand, and we had a second award for five hundred thousand. That's the one I'm asking to accept tonight.
Okay.
And it's, it's in conjunction with the first grant, which was for phase one, and this should be for phase two and three.
These two are tied together, right? Yeah, exactly.
So that the level of detail, though, that we were requesting in terms of grant application worksheet session, but then speak to the different phases of the project, so we will be in line with what's happening now, just so we're, again, understanding what we're approving. And five years down the line, they will say, okay, there were three phases. They only, the first resolution approved phase one. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any, Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you, President Skringy. Sorry, I have one additional question. Um, so this five hundred thousand dollar grant, that's for phase, for which phase?
Two and three.
For two and three together. Okay, so phase, where are we in terms of the progress? Have we completed phase one?
No, phase one was awarded. It takes a while for the money to actually get to us from the grant page. So we've got the contract now. It was just signed and put in place. We're, um, uh, finishing the first bid. And that bid is going to cover all three phases as a design element. So we'll have all three phases in that one, um, designed with blueprints and all that, and then we'll individually bid for the construction work.
I see. Okay.
I'm hoping to get that out in April, the bid request.
Okay, so phase one has not officially started yet?
No.
Because we have to wait for all of the my, all of the grant money together, so we can have one contract for all three phases? Am I understanding that correctly?
No, not necessarily.
Okay.
We were just awarded the contract for phase one, and we don't start projects until we have a signed contract.
Right, okay.
Right, and so with that funding, we're going to issue an RFQ for a contractor to create the full blueprint plans. We have the design, but we need the actual, you know, blueprint, so where everything's gonna go. So that's what we're gonna do altogether. That'll be split into three phases, but we're gonna do it just as one project for the design part of it. And then we'll individually bid for the construction phase for each phase one, phase two, and phase three.
Oh.
If that makes sense.
I think so. Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Thank you, Dr. Burling. Appreciate you.
If you need any additional documentation, let me know. I've got it.
Councilwoman Red.
Thank you. I don't want to speak out of turn, of course, but again, as, uh, some processes are being realigned and re um, are cleaned up, you know, in terms of reporting and understanding exactly what projects are on the board and what we are approving. That's part of our ad, you know? Because we too, it appeared as if this was one project for three hundred thousand, and now, without any additional information, that's why we're asking so many questions.
Sure, I, I understand. And the, and the first grant application, we were hoping to get the additionals, but it was initially designed to be covered just one phase.
Okay, so the new iteration included three phases in a higher dollar amount. That included the first phase.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that was always part of the design, was three phases, but we weren't sure we'd get the full funding.
Got it.
So we broke it down to one, and then when we got the additional funding, we.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So yes, hopefully that will be in the with detail.
I can send you.
Yeah, Juliette, I was about to say, is there, is there, is there anything that you can send us that just kind of paints maybe an aggregate picture of like the scale and the scope of the entire project, and then we can? Yeah, and then if you send that to me, I, I can make sure that gets circulated to everybody whenever, whenever you get a chance.
Sure.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Juliette, so much. Appreciate you. Councilwoman Red.
From my own understanding as well, there will be public hearings associated with this as well, so there's an entire piece we're missing before we move into that other, you know, because.
We have to do the seeker, and we have a public hearing, yeah, so that, we just need to accept the grant now so we can move forward.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's still a lot coming.
Thank you so much.
Yep, we're good.
This time, uh, I will ask, uh, Tito Martinez to join us up front, please.
Um, if you feel comfortable staying there, I don't, I don't mind. Uh, I'll watch you. Nah.
All right, so this is a, this is a, a topic discussion as it relates to the Binghamton Plaza and the seeker hint, hint on the key word here, process. Uh, so with that being said, Tito, how are you?
Good.
Good, good to see you. Um, I'm gonna hand the floor over to Tito and Brian Seacrest. Gentlemen, the floor is yours.
So we've begun the seeker process for the Binghamton Plaza project. Um, and the objective today really is to acknowledge that City Council is the agency that would be acting as the lead agency for seeker, and to acknowledge that letters were sent to the other involved and interested agencies today notifying them of that.
Yes, um, so just so you're aware, this is sort of give you a highlight of things to come. The process we have is tonight to have that discussion, just letting you know what the process is. We anticipate that on April nineteenth, uh, you will receive a full seeker packet, including a super motion, the, uh, the legislative proposal, legislation, everything. You'll receive that on the nineteenth. We would ask that that comes to the work session on four twenty-four. And then it comes to the floor for, for a vote on May tenth. We did that purposely a little bit, so that if something, and for work session, and if it came, if there's some changes that come to light that require there be changes to those documents that we initially gave to you on four nineteen, there is still the, the May eighth work session where we could make the changes, bring them before you, and act for them to be expedited for the May tenth. But that's really about all we needed to discuss. We just wanted to make sure that you were aware of what the timeline, proposed timeline would be. And the, the packet that we, we're gonna get approximately on the nineteenth, the, the seeker packet, I should say, that's also gonna be a part of the work session packet for the meeting on the twenty-fourth.
That is correct.
Correct, yeah. Any follow-up discussion?
Councilwoman Red.
Thank you for this clarification. I think you're, you're kind of giving us the bare bones. Why are we handling the seeker different from any other of our processes? Why do we have, what's, what's happening? What's, tell?
So this is a type-one action, uh, which means it's sort of predetermined. It's on a, a, a list of, of predetermined items that could have a potentially large impact. And when something is on that type-one list, you need to do what's called coordinated review. And so all of the agencies that have an interest or that will make some sort of decision on the process, uh, need to work together under one lead agency. Um, a lot of times what you do is uncoordinated review, so all the different agencies just do their own seeker. Uh, in this case, City Council is the appropriate agency to do lead, to be the lead agency, and so we have to notify all of the other agencies ahead of time, give them a chance to say that they're okay with that. Um, and it's just, it's a little more rigid process if it's a type-one action.
This is the same process that we followed when we did the, uh, the type-one seeker for the six-word interceptor back in twenty-twenty.
Oh.
It's the same process. It's.
Okay. Six more. Okay.
You have to compare it to other type-one actions, which is something.
And that's the piece that, again, I don't think anyone said it. This is a type-one.
No, 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 I, I, we, I think we both left that out.
Yes, sorry, which is why, again, I'm asking, why is this different from any other seeker? And then, um, so you're saying by April nineteenth, the other agencies that are involved, which is really, really, uh, in a couple of days, they will have reviewed the packet and have signed, I see Megan saying no. Are you saying that to me? You're answering the question. Okay, so, uh, right. Thank you, Megan. Right, I, I shouldn't be looking in the audience, but, uh, my question was, since it is a type-one, and we're assuming we're, we're supposed to have the coordinator review, we're thinking that as the lead agency, when will we have all of the coordinate, the other entities approval of the seeker we are starting to review on the nineteenth?
Within thirty days, um.
So we're going to put it before a vote, before we hear the feedback from the other entity?
No.
Thirty days from nineteen?
They should have responded before, well before May, more, maybe before May, May tenth. I believe the, the letters went out, correct?
Yeah, within thirty days of today.
Oh, thirty days of today, not of the nineteen.
Yeah, and usually they respond faster, more quickly than that, but they have, they're entitled to thirty days.
Okay, and if there are clarifications or questions to this letter, or what packet we've not yet to review, um, how will we know?
Because copies of the letters that they come back from them will be provided.
It will be provided to City Council. That is on the record that this.
You have to have them. It's gotta be part of the record, yeah.
Okay, so as soon as you receive the letter, we will receive some type of correspondence, so we are aware, but we will receive this seeker soon, so that if any subsequent responses to the letter that went out today, that we don't know what, you know, we have nothing.
Yep.
Okay.
You, you'll, you'll receive the, the seeker form today.
Okay, we'll receive, we'll receive a copy of the letter that went out to the other entity.
We can send that as well.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. That concludes my question.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you, President Skringy. Hi, Tito, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Um, who are the other interested agencies?
So the, uh, the D E C is one. Uh, COD is the other. They'll be involved, uh, because there's a demolition involved of an, of an older building. Uh, the Army Corps of Engineers, we have as an, a potentially interested agency because of the proximity of the
The flood.
The levy there.
Yeah.
Um, although we don't know that they need to actually issue any permits on this, but we're just trying to be safe. And Broom County Planning is, is, is also potentially interested agency.
Okay, so when we say interested agencies, we're talking about the the agencies who are maybe overseeing or issuing permits or things like that. We're not talking about the business owners that are in the plaza, the property manager, anything like.
Just government agencies that either are issuing a permit, uh, funding some part of it, or may have some level of interest or some input on the project.
Okay, um, I I don't know if you're the right person to ask this question to, but I'm wondering what what outreach or buy-in has been done with the business owners in the Binghamton Plaza right now?
I'm, I'm just working on the seeker portion of it. Uh, we just, I'm not sure.
Yeah, this is only the seeker portion of it, so none of those parties, they would not be relevant as it relates to the seeker process.
Right. And that's what I, I wasn't sure you were the right person. I just, um, yeah, as the representative for that district, I mean, I, I understand the motivation for moving this forward and the eminent domain, everything, like, I get it. And also, I've heard feedback from the people who have run successful businesses in that plaza for decades that feel that they've been left out of this process, ignored, um, steamrolled over. So I want to make sure, as the representative for that area, that both of those parties, so to speak, are adequately feel that their voice has been represented or heard adequately.
That council member?
Okay.
If that's okay.
Sure.
Um, and just basically receipt what the mayor has said, um, publicly before, that, um, we're more than happy to work with any of the existing businesses um, in that plaza. Some of them have, have reached out to us, um, with questions just about timeline. The mayor has said that this is a very long process, um, so that, you know, it, it will take a while before anything happens. Um, but, but again, that the city is happy to work with those businesses there to help them relocate or whatever, whatever it may be that they need.
Right, because I know, and I think that there are some businesses that would be fine to relocate, may, maybe potentially the, the newer ones. I know there's a business that opened within the last year there. Um, and I spoke to the, the business owner there, and there are there are some people who, who actually love that location, and, you know, I've spoken to my constituents on the north side, you know, some of them. Of course, constituents on the north side who actually really like the Binghamton Plaza, that location and that building. Um, and again, I'm not saying one way or another we should or we shouldn't push forward, but again, it just, um, it just, it makes me anxious when I, and I, and I understand that business owners are not the relevant parties in this process, but it makes me nervous to hear something like interested agencies and then not have the, the representation of, um, people who are not necessarily in favor of this project. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, and I, I will say, um, and I'm happy to talk more offline about this, because this is specifically about the seeker process tonight. I'm happy to talk more, um, afterwards or whenever, but um, the mayor spoke to that a little bit as part of the public hearing process that some of those businesses attended.
Yeah.
Um, and just kind of spoke to the condition of the plaza, um, the condition of what some of those businesses are existing in currently. Um, and that's all in that public hearing transcript, and like I said, we can talk more about it whenever, um, you'd like, but, okay.
I will take you up on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none. Tito, Brian, and Megan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. This time, I'll ask the, uh, chief to come forward, uh, RL twenty-three dash eighty-eight. Evening, Chief, how are you?
How are you?
Good, how are you, sir? This is, uh, twenty-three dash eighty-eight. Chief, the floor is yours.
Okay, um, this is an RL, basically to defund eight first-grade firefighters and fund, uh, eight probationary. Basically to defund eight first grade firefighters and fund uh eight probationary firefighters. And it's also uh. Your start date is gonna be the first. We're hoping we can expedite this and it also uh. Promotions uh funds need to be moved for promotions that are to be available on April sixteenth. So often when we we, you know, we have openings, uh, we move money within the budgets or. And we take the money from the open positions and uh fund the probationary firefighters. And like I said, they'll be starting uh May first in our academy.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Chief. Discussion. Seeing none, uh, Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you, President Scringy. Hi Chief, how are you?
Hi, Councilwoman, how are you?
Good, um, so sorry, I'm trying to read my notes here, which are not always illegible. Um, how? How many full position, fully funded positions do we still have?
Uh, total, uh, hundred and seventeen, I believe.
Or, um. Well, sorry, of the the first grade firefighters, how many fully funded? Or are we defunding all of them?
Oh, no, we're just gonna defund uh eight of them.
Eight of them out out of how many?
Out of the, there's a total of a hundred and seventeen.
Okay.
First grade uh. I can get that number for you.
And I I could probably. Look this up myself. I didn't have my budget book with me while I was going through this.
Yeah.
Um, and how many are currently filled of those positions?
Uh, all but, right now, all but uh eight.
All but the eight that we're proposing to defund and, okay.
All right, there'll be additional retirements in the year, probably three or four. But uh they're later on in the year and we're not able to fund them right now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Riley.
You, Council President, hello, how are you?
Well, Councilperson, how are you?
Good, good.
Yeah.
Um, so again. We're looking at the budget lines and we understand that firefighters are necessary. There's been a deficit for some time. Can you tell me what I out of title is in terms of a line, a budget line?
Sure, what happens is if um just say like a a captain's on vacation for a couple of weeks. And um the senior firefighter will take over his duties. As as captain and so.
He's working outside of his title.
Yep, he's up.
Okay, but that's not deemed overtime.
No, it's not overtime. It's just.
Pay for it.
Now, it now, it's just they they bring him up to that that pay grade.
Okay.
I'm a captain, but uh. A firefighter lieutenant.
And then payouts.
Okay, payouts are uh when a firefighter retires, particularly early in the year.
Absolutely.
He gets paid for unused sick time, a certain percentage of it. He gets paid for, or he or she gets paid for uh unused vacation time. And personal time.
Absolutely, and how many uh firefighters do we have retiring? Within this.
Right, right, right now, there's there's eight.
Oh, eight are retiring and then eight are coming on.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm gonna ask uh David Halloran to come forward with respect to RL twenty three dash ninety. Yes, Councilwoman Riley, go ahead.
Thank uh, um, sorry, uh, Chief, one more question or somebody else. I'm Dave, you might be able to answer this too. So this transfer though is not for the salaries. This only lasts while they're in their probationary period. We will re, we will have to reallocate. Once they've surpassed that probationary period, correct? Because this amount here. Isn't an annual salary for eight firemen, correct? It may. Chief, yeah, chief, I said, maybe Dave can have it, but he doesn't have the sheet.
If if you want me to, I think I can answer the question.
You, do you have the?
Uh, I I know all the budget works, uh, and how the fire department works, but we had. I'm gonna say roughly ninety firefighters, full first grade firefighters. And then eight of them retired, so they're taking that. Eight of those ninety firefighters and moving it from that budget line down to probationary. And then next year, when you do your budget, those probationary firefighters will go up the next level, the next level, the next level and go. Eventually back to first grade firefighter.
Awesome, so this.
Not losing any positions, we're just moving them from. You know, first grade firefighter to probationary and then they'll eventually over six years work their way up to first grade.
Perfect, and probationary firefighters, we are paying for the annual salary with this number here.
Correct.
Oh. Okay, and that includes insurance and everything.
Uh, I'd have to look at that number.
Okay.
I mean, I can tell you what a first grade firefighter makes per the contract.
Well, basically, that means we won't be trying to reallocate to ensure that we retain these eight. We're good with the number here for the year.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. How are you, Dave?
Good evening.
How are you guys? Good to see you. Floor is yours, sir.
Uh, this resolution, the goal of the resolution is to fix an oversight when this member was hired. Uh, the plan. Uh, was never, he never selected a plan. And uh by default, the state retirement system puts them in the default plan, which is a fifty five year. Regardless of higher day age plan. Uh, generally speaking, from our perspective, this is a young person's job. We've always pushed and lobbied for early retirement. Uh, everyone else on the fire department, just so you know, is in a twenty or twenty five year plan. Uh, this particular situation has happened in the past. Uh, but won't happen again. When we saw this being a problem, we had state legislation passed that when somebody doesn't select a plan. They go into either the twenty or twenty five year plan. Um, the increased costs in the past service costs that is gonna come out of this resolution. Are and were what the city would be paying for if he was in the plan all along.
Appreciate your consideration. This went through the state, right? Because of the twenty five year option.
It either one, if you went to a twenty or twenty five year plan, it still requires legislation.
Right.
Which we did last year and then we kind of lost track to this resolution. We picked it back up again this year. But the next step is to get home or legislation and then goes back up to the state and they'll push it along.
Got it. So this is just picking up on our end to make sure that our end is clean.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dave. Any discussion? Councilwoman Riley.
Thank you, Council President. Um, thank you for this. We did receive a lot of correspondence about this, this information. Um, for record purposes, though, we received legislation from both the Assembly and the Senate. But you've only sent us the Assembly and I would like to have the Senate's document in here too. So that as records are retained and reviewed, we do see Senator Webb's document in our packet.
Yeah, I think the.
They said they had the same language, but different.
Well, yeah, it it has to in order to pass. Um, but we, yeah, but it get. And set full numbers.
Um, numbers.
Madam Clerk, if you have the. If you just have a copy of the one that was sent on the state senate side, if you could just please send that to me whenever you get a chance and I'll make sure that that got circulated to the.
Retained in the record.
True.
Thank you.
Yes, of course. Any other discussion? Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you, President Scringy. Hi Dave, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, um, so again, forgive me, I'm looking over my notes here, um. So, uh, on page, on the second page of the Assembly. Um, legislation. There, so it says there's uh there will be an increase of approximately. Five thousand three hundred dollars in the annual contributions of the City of Binghamton for the fiscal year. Um, is that? Already budgeted or will we have to move money? Around in order to budget for this additional fifty three hundred dollars?
I would say that you probably have to move money around.
Okay.
Um, this, this wasn't anticipated. Like I said, we discussed it last year, but it never came to fruition. We again discussed it again. Um, and these costs change every year depending on length of service, et cetera. So we didn't even know what these costs were until the amortization came back from the state recently.
Okay. Um, and is there? An age guideline for. Hiring firefighters?
Used to be thirty five and then. Affirmative action, equal opportunity, all of that kind of stuff. There is no age limit now. People can get hired. We fired a fireman at forty nine years old.
Uh huh, so it used to be thirty five.
Thirty five years old. Was the maximum age.
Wow, okay.
Yeah.
But there's tests that, you know, and uh uh requirement, like physical requirement.
Exactly.
Right, so regardless of how old someone is, as long as they are able to pass the test, that they would be. A qualified candidate.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Dave, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. With that being said, I'll ask Elizabeth Rousseau to join us uh for RL twenty three dash eighty seven.
Elizabeth is the attorney in my office. I'll speak to that if you don't mind. She's not here.
Floor is yours, sir.
Yes, uh, beginning last year, we sent notices of con, not condemnation, but a notices notifying the owner. Of twenty one Dickinson Street that it was in bad condition and not the entire house. We're talking about the rear portrait of the two story porch. Unfortunately, this house sits directly against the sidewalk, so if this porch fails, it's likely to do. It'll fall away from the house but into the sidewalk. Um, and so. We've renewed that again. We sent them new notices just a couple of weeks ago. And we're asking that you approve the funding uh to tear down this rear porch. It's a minimal cost. Um, I will tell you that we have had a person who claims to be a owner on a lease. On the land contract, step forward, he's gonna take it down on his own money, so it's potential that we don't have to spend this money. But um I've dealt with this individual before. I don't particularly trust that he will follow through, so it's still asked that you um. Provide the funding to if he does not follow through, that the city is prepared and ready to proceed and bring it down, cuz it's dangerous.
Yeah, there's definitely a safety issue there. I I've seen it myself, so it's good to see that this coming through. Um, any discussion? Councilwoman Riley.
You, Council President, again, we we support, we all typically support anything to ensure the safety of residents. Just to clarify though, who will be, what department in the city will be responsible for this? Or are we hiring someone externally?
We will hire someone externally. They've got, they've already received bids, um, not bids. Price quotes from different party. We we have a quote that we believe that we can go with under the city's purchasing guidelines and it's ready. They're they're gonna be ready to go forward.
Okay, and those bids are under the um total amount in this.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, thanks, Brian. Ask uh Ron Lake to join us, please. For RL twenty three dash eighty six. Evening, Ron, how are you? Good evening. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. This RL is to. For one of our term agreements, which is for the environmental services. And the agreement has that we can extend it in one year increments if everybody agrees to keep the prices. And we're recommending now that we take that one year extension. So we're going off from the twenty two contract. And the reason you you don't see any line item there for the budget is because this is open to all departments. Whichever department decides to use it. Then they come up with whatever budget line item that they have for that particular. Project that they need to do.
Thank you, Ron. Discussion, Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you, President Scringy. Hi, Ron, how are you? Um, so if we are extending the twenty twenty two contract, that would mean that in. So it's essentially, it's almost like a two year contract, right? A one year with a one.
It it has two one year extensions. This is the first of them.
Okay, so then next year it would be another renewal and then the year after that it would have to be a.
Uh, if everybody was still agreeable next year, or we may go back out the bit.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Ron, thank you very much. This time I will ask. Uh, Kent to join us. For RL twenty three dash eighty nine. Evening, Kent, how are you? Swell, I'm gonna steal that word. That's a good word.
Jimmy Stewart version.
Twenty three dash eighty nine, the floor is yours, sir.
Um, yeah, so. Is in regards to the staff accountant, it's a position that just we're not able to fill. Uh, was advertised for uh close to a year. Just didn't get any qualified candidates for that position. Um, and so. Uh, I worked with Chuck on identifying maybe we just need to take a different approach. Uh, to the work that needs to be done. And if there's a way to do that more uh effectively, more efficiently. Then it'd be great if we could even do it at lower cost. Uh, and this is the plan that we have devised that we would defund the staff accountant position. And transfer that in. There's a junior account position that already existed, but it's been uh defunct for quite some time. And so we uh we know qualified candidates who could uh jump into a junior accountant position. And uh, so that's, that's what this is uh requesting.
Kent, is there a? So for the minimum calls for that position going into a junior accountant, minimum, minimum qualifications, I should say, instead of abbreviating it. Is it, is the CPA required for that? Is that acting? It's. And you're still having an issue.
Yep.
Wow. Interesting. Thank you, Kent. Um, discussion, Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you, President Scringy. Hi Kent, how are you?
Hi, swell, how are you?
Good, um, so the the proposed title of this legislation cites. The salary is forty two thousand dollars, but the budget transfer sheet only says thirty nine thousand. Where, what's the discrepancy there?
That's an excellent question you ask, isn't it?
Okay.
Uh, and actually, I I asked Chuck about that, but I haven't gotten a response back, so I I noticed that it's wrong before I came down.
Can I take a stab at that? I think it may be the time of year that we're actually doing it. That we funded a whole year for a senior.
Right.
And because we're hiring them, we're higher, the the earliest we could hire a junior for this legislature to pass, we'll have several months where. They're not gonna be paid.
That's what I was.
So the salary for this year will be much lower than it will.
Yeah.
That's why it's so close.
The other side of it is that it's not a full calendar year, I would imagine. That's probably. It's a good question.
Right, yeah, no, that, I mean, that make, that makes sense conceptually, but I don't. I don't see that making sense with the numbers. Do you know what I mean? Right, make sure you're right.
Go ahead.
Staff accountant position is currently funded for how much? That's, that's what I think.
Sixty.
Oh, it is sixty, so it's a decrease and we didn't need the total because it is part of the year.
Correct.
Hiring six weeks, all of that stuff. Okay, that makes sense.
Right, but that's still, but I'm still confused because. If, let's say, the yearly salary was forty two thousand and we're hiring someone in. Like April or May, then that would be something like thirty thousand, not thirty nine thousand. That's why I'm not. Right, but I, but. Right, I know obviously insurance and benefits cost more, but do you see what I mean? Like, why would the RL sheet say forty two thousand? And the budget transfer sheet says thirty nine thousand? That doesn't make sense. If we were including insurance and benefits, I think that the number should match regardless. If we are, if we're not, if it's for a full year, if it's for part, part of the year, that discrepancy doesn't make sense to me.
I had the same question, so I was asking Chuck for the math, so we could check our work on.
Okay, that'd be great. Okay.
So I I understand the question for sure.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Kent, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you. Uh, really quickly, I will just jump over to. Um, does anybody have any questions for Madam Clerk with respect to upcoming legislation? Councilwoman Freeman.
But um, not for the the clerk, but I have a question regarding upcoming legislation for. The council body, if that's okay?
Of course, please.
I just, I wanted to bring up the fact that um I don't see the piece of legislation that I proposed. At last work session here, and I was just wondering if I could ask. um why it is that my colleagues did not feel comfortable supporting this legislation? Especially given the fact that the only concern that I heard brought up was addressed, in my opinion. There was oh, the, right, thank you, uh Councilwoman Riley, the um the legislation that I proposed regarding uh reverting the language of the Human Rights Commission membership and appointment language to what it was in twenty-eleven. Uh it was changed in twenty-sixteen, um not because they were worried that the services were duplicative, but it was, I mean, I can make an inference as to why that was uh changed. But the, the only concern that I heard was that the, there was a worry that the the services provided by a municipal human rights commission would be duplicative of those provided at the state. And I uh had spoken to a representative of the AG, the Attorney General's Office, Councilwoman Riley had spoken to um representatives at the State Division of Human Rights, both of whom said that it would be beneficial for them to have a municipal human rights commission. So I just, um you know, I'm, I'm a little disappointed. I was wondering if I could could inquire as to why my colleagues did not feel comfortable supporting that legislation.
Discussion, anybody? Councilwoman.
Well, I would like to know because um when we left, I believe it had the numbers, it needed four signatures. And the sheet had three signatures. Councilman Burns wrote in to support. So what happened? Can we see that sign-out sheet?
If there was four on it and there's.
Three and then one, so that made the four.
Yeah, that's why I said four. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So if there was four on it and it's not on the agenda now, then that would mean that a minimum of at least one signature was removed. And of the three remaining signatures, two of those three members were not sitting members of the committee. So therefore it lost the threshold.
Okay, so one was removed. Is that what we're saying?
It would have had to have been.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so you removed your signature from the legislation. Try to turn on your mic, yeah, and then pull it close.
It only go worse than that. Sorry.
You're okay.
Along. Yes, it was regarding the statement about duplicative services. And I will just get some more information.
Um, thank you for sharing that. I I really appreciate that. What, what um more information would be helpful for you?
To hear more about how it did work out last time, the good, the bad. Just involvement, I'd love to talk to Mayor more about it. I don't know if you can get back as well. Um and um potentially even the folks that you guys have conversations with. I would just like overall more information. I don't feel like it's duplicative service.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and I I did reach out um to the the AG's office and the DHR additionally afterward to see if they um would be able to either come and discuss or talk with me. And I I hadn't heard back from them after the initial um outreach. So I, yeah, I'm happy to get that information. I also, you know, I think that we at the city level have a lot of services that are quote-unquote duplicative of things that are at the state level, you know, like even at the county level, right? We can say, well, we have a county legislature, so why do we need a city council? Or, you know, we have you know, I don't know, we have a a state senate, so why do we need city council? You know, there's like things that exist, e- even in our court system, it's the same way where there's progressively higher and higher courts so that things that happen at the lower level can be referred up. I think it would be a horrible situation if we only had the Supreme Court, right? Or we only had New York State Courts and we didn't have city and um and county courts below that, you know, to create this kind of hierarchy or pyramid or funnel where only the um the more serious or complicated complaints could go up the ladder and we, we could, you know, address things locally, but um I'm, I'm happy to get more information if that would mean that my colleagues feel more comfortable supporting what, what I believe is incredibly important legislation. Both logistically and symbolically as well. I think it it functions as both a, a logistical tool for the city to have and, and also a symbolic one because I think that if I heard that uh my council representative did not want to support a human rights commission whose mission was to ban discrimination and deal with uh complaints of discrimination, I think that would make me upset. So um I will report back. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other questions on pending legislation for Clerk's office? Really quickly before we go into our last discussion. Just figured I'd get that out of the way. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Council President. Again, I think what we see here is that when, when legislation is proposed, we are not using the democratic process to talk through the legislation. So our constituents, we're not being transparent in terms of our deliberations or our thoughts regarding things that are brought to the body. Again, we have this time, this is a work session where comments are, are, are heard. Discussion is, is, is to be held. You know, this is time to talk. And typically what happens, we bring forth legislation or there is legislation brought forth by other entities. And there are no discussion. None. Which makes, again, and I've said this before, I wish I had an intern that could pull the records every time I quote or re emphasize something I say on a I say constantly. It makes it seem as if there are side conversations to where a decision is made before we even come to counsel. So this meeting is really performative because there's a subset of this body that already knows what they will do and what they won't do. So there's no need to have a discussion. So our constituents come and they tell how they feel. You have members of the body pulling data, using time, unpaid time, because we know that the rate of pay for this role does not match the effort that it takes to really do our due diligence with this, this, this legislation. But we have members of the body reaching out, making connections, having conversations and bringing back pure data, pure information. But we don't even discuss it. That's not what this process, that's not why this process was developed. That's not why we have the democratic body. The, the ability to have a session, discuss the session and move forward. Now everyone has a right to sign whatever they like. But it shouldn't be done in secrecy. Right? When we left, we had the number of signatures necessary. And until I said we had the number of signatures necessary, should we pull the sheet? That's when information was, was provided. So now again, I feel like, and I thank you for being forthcoming with that. But then where was the discussion? Where was the question?
So Councilwoman, I, I appreciate all that. So let me attempt to try to offer some substance here. So there's, there's a couple of things. There's a couple of things that, that I'll say to this that are process-related and then I'll speak to some substance. It is any individual's right to sponsor or not sponsor something, to add or not remove or remove. I am not going to question any of my colleagues on that because that's their right and I'm not going to do that. In my opinion, if it wasn't brought up, it either wasn't brought up because that member didn't want to have a discussion about it. Or they just didn't feel that it merited a discussion. And if it's their right to add or remove their name, then by extension, it's their right or not right to engage in a discussion in or not about it. And I don't think there's anything undemocratic about that. That's just the member's right, plain and simple. I, I respect that and I think broadly we all do. You know, as it relates to side conversations, so I, I think it's important to understand that context matters, right? So for example, when we say side conversations, what are we alluding to? Because at the expense of being blunt, I have side conversations with members in the five floors of this building every day, shaping my perspective on different requests for legislation. There's nothing mischievous about that. There's RLs that I come to a meeting with that I've had ten side conversations about. And I still don't know where I'm at. But it's helped to form my opinion. So if a member wants to share what their perspective is on something, that's fine. I respectfully, I, I don't think that, that I don't think that there's a perception there of a group of members have a perspective or a position and this is just pro forma, right? Discussions happen here. They also happen eight hours a day on all five floors of this building. That happened to not be the four days of the month that we meet here, right? So there are lots of side conversations that I will be very open and upfront. I have conversations with the mayor. I have conversations with department heads. I have conversations with the DPW workers that pick up the recycling and the garbage in front of my house. I have side conversations about requests for legislation all of the time. Most importantly, I have them with the people that I represent, my sixty-four hundred bosses. There's nothing mischievous, there's nothing ill-perceptive, there's nothing undemocratic about that, respectfully. I, I just the way people choose to enunciate that, that's it. If we want to hit very bluntly with respect to the proposal on the HRC, Councilwoman Friedman, here's a reason why I didn't sign it. Number one, your RL specifically, is it related to a, a potential change in the way members get seated, right? So I think there's actually, as it relates to a human rights commission locally, there's two actual conversations that are going on here, right? So again, let's just open the airwaves and just put it out there. So number one, there is how does an individual become a sitting member? But then there's a broader discussion of should we have an HRC at all? And let's just call it for what it is. So in two thousand sixteen, I did vote for the change in the way in which the membership is comprised on the Human Rights Commission. I will put for myself, speaking for myself as a councilman for the first district and not a city council president, I unequippedly do not support a human rights commission in the city of Binghamton. And the duplicative nature of it is just base level of it. For me, I have a couple of issues. Number one, by definition, there is duplication. Okay? If members in the State Attorney General's Office and representatives or sitting members of the New York State Human Rights Commission stay a local body for making workflow more efficient, by definition, acknowledging there's duplication. They're admitting that. Because if there was no crossover, by definition, there would be nothing that the local body could potentially move forward. So they're admitting there's duplication. There has to be. Because again, a local body can't say, hey, New York State, review this if by definition both bodies don't have the purview to review it. If they both have the purview to review it, by definition, that's duplication. Right? So that's number one. Number two, there's a city liability issue that comes into play as well. We reside and live in a state where in the public sector largely most of the employees in this building are unionized. The two major stakeholders in those labor contracts are their negotiating body or representation and City Hall. We are uninsured. I have a very big concern about a local human rights commission that can make a claim for a potential action to be taken that goes outside of an already negotiated process for assessment and reassessment that is laid out in those very contracts. That's concerning to me. Because if they deem and bring in exogenous variables and entities that have nothing to do with being an actual stakeholder of that contract, that's a potential liability and I have a problem with that. Let's be honest in a pro. So for me, those are my two major reasons why I would not support that. So just to put that out there. Councilwoman Friedman, please.
Um, thank you, President Scingy. I, I also appreciate your um candidness with your concerns as well. Now, my the so the legislation in twenty-sixteen didn't actually defa- or disband the Human Rights Commission.
No.
So we technically still have one on the books.
Correct.
So we haven't, you know, all of, all of your concerns are I mean, they're what am I trying to say? Like, we if those legal naffoos are there, I mean, it just it strikes me as surprising that we haven't, you know, that let's say Corporation Council hasn't said, well, actually, we can't do this because of the, you know, the legality of it. It's just functionally defunct. And from the, the first five years, from twenty-eleven to twenty-sixteen, the, the HRC was robust and functioning and the only thing that really changed was the membership appointment. And so I, I don't think, a- as far as I know, and you know, I, I could be wrong about this, but I don't think that there were any legal concerns with how the HRC was functioning beforehand. So it seems like this was you know, the, the change in twenty-sixteen was kind of a, a way to like undermine it without legit- without officially saying, well, I don't support a, a body at the city level that's designed to deal with discrimination based on certain protective categories, race, class, gender, et cetera. And so it's I, I think that your concern, like I, I, they seem to me to be like well-informed that you, you know, you thought about it. There's, there's a legitimate reason why, but it also seems maybe misplaced just based on the fact that if, if any of those were true, if there was like a legal issue with the HRC, it would have been brought up in a different capacity. That's just my, my impression. Um, and like you said, you have the right to vote or put your name on anything that you want to share, what you wanted to share, what you don't want. I think that um you know, I would tend to agree with Councilwoman Riley just being one of the two people, like frequently, we are the only two council members that ask any questions at any meeting. And so I'm just used to functioning as transparently as I can and trying to, you know, from my point of view, the my, you know, seven thousand or so bosses hired me to to be here to not only understand the legislation for myself, but also ask questions to clarify for, for their understanding too. And so do you have a right to say whatever you want in a meeting? Of course, of course, I'm not questioning that. It just seems like we come back to this question of can versus should over and over and over again? Can you stay silent during a meeting? Yeah, you can. Can I decide that I'm not showing up to any meetings for the rest of the year? Sure, I can do that. I don't think you can fire me for that. Um, in fact, being an elected official has pretty good job security, fortunately or unfortunately. But But, you know, again, should, should I just stop coming to meetings? Should I stay silent? Should I stop asking questions? I would argue the answer to that, the question is no. So I'm, again, I'm happy to um. Do even, even further research and, and come back and maybe we can, uh, you know, I can try and arrange for a representative for the. The state uh, DHR to come, um, but. Again, I, it's just, it's not to say your concerns aren't legitimate, it just is disheartening to see that this. Um, did not even make it to the floor.
And, and, and I appreciate that, right? And, and just to follow up and, and Councilwoman Riley, I'm, I'm actually going to steal your words. Um, you know, just to point this out, right? How side conversations work? You and I have side conversations over the last week about getting in touch with each other, right? You had a technical problem with your phone, I called you, you emailed me, I emailed you back. We were literally texting each other yesterday and today to talk afterward, right? So we have side conversations all the time as it relates to different stuff. Yes, Councilwoman Riley.
You, Council President, because you know, I think you've misinterpreted what I meant or intended by the statement because we're going on the wrong path.
Please.
Um, first of all, as I alluded to earlier, there are several conversations which I mentioned previously. That each council member does their due diligence to independently seek the opinion of those. And it does not align with the cost, the, the reimbursement, the, the rate of pay. I said that very early on that you must go out and. Seek answers for yourself. Remember, I did say that.
Yeah.
So then the side conversation was a little bit different. Investigation. And a side conversation, again, never, never once did I say it was maliciously, it, it was for malicious intent. Again, I said what is believed or perceived by the body when no questions are asked. That could be positive or negative depending on who's interpreting the behavior. So never once did I say it was malicious intent, nor did I intend to. Uh, I, as you continue to say, I have side conversations. Yes, we all have side conversations.
True.
I mean, I had a side conversation with Lee. Okay, I mean, but that's not what I meant and you knew that, but that's okay.
No, I didn't know what you meant, because if I did mean, I wouldn't speak for you because that would be disrespectful of me. If I knew what you meant, or if I wasn't sure you would ask. I didn't say that you meant it directly in that matter. What I said was. It depend on, depends on the context in which you say.
Can I finish?
Please.
Awesome. So now, um, again, we talked about duplic- duplicativeness, the duplic- the, uh, duplicative nature of. Roles. And when there are roles, again, council reviews legislation, so does the mayor, right? And based upon the code ordinance or governing document, it determines who has what right and what privileges with said piece of evidence. So even with this local council and the state human, this local commission and the state Human Rights Commission. There may seem to be duplicative efforts, but because of the hierarchy or the taxonomy, it would not be the same. So I just wanted to clear, clarify that as well. And then there was a statement about there's two questions. One, should it exist? It still exists.
Hmm.
So that's not a question. That's already, it already.
That's not the question I said. Oh, I said, should it not exist anymore?
Thank you. I conclude.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other discussion? Anything else that would like to be said about this? Councilwoman Riley, go ahead.
Absolutely. Again, yes, thank you. Throw them once more. I am glad that you did share your thoughts on it, though.
Appreciate it.
Right. Includes my second set of, third set of statements regarding this.
Appreciate you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, it's not discussion, totally off topic, but I did also bring in, I meant to pass it out earlier. Copy of the record from the hearing that was held regarding Binghamton Plaza. For every, a, a copy for everybody, I'll pass them out at the end of the meeting. I will give the other copies to the clerk, maybe to go to.
Do we have, do we have an electronic copy, Brian?
I can also send you to them email next tomorrow.
If, yeah, if you could email it to me and then I'll make sure that the, my colleagues get that, or, or to the, I. If you email it to me, I'll, I'll send it out because I know.
He was, what's called, we call it a, a mini, which means it has four pages to a page. It's a lot easier to read, goes much faster. So. I will, I have the paper copies, I may be able to send electronically that way, but it's a little bit harder to read a mini. Electronically.
Probably got to zoom in a little bit, yeah. Thank you. Councilwoman Freeman, please.
Um, thank you. So this is, this is the transcript from the whole hearing, not just the copy of the mayor's statement?
Nope, this is February twenty first. This is all the public comment, all the people who spoke, the attorneys who read the statements. This is everything from start to finish.
So this is some material, we haven't seen this yet.
Uh, probably not.
Okay.
This is a certified copy from the, for the.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing underway here, a motion adjourned. Let's.
Mo- motion adjourned.
Motion by Councilman.
Wait, sorry.
Councilwoman Freeman, please.
Is there, it says there's a discussion that you wanted to bring up about our sign out sheet?
Thank you. My apologies. Thank you for that.
I think it's still adjourned.
No, 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 this won't take long. No, 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 we, we got into the HRC. My apologies. Thank you for pointing that out. Um, really quickly, so. Uh, with the onset of COVID nineteen, the general process has been that if you're un. A meeting for whatever reason, uh, the generally accepted practice was as we virtual meetings, was that if you weren't there. Your sponsorship was assumed automatic, and if you wanted to remove sponsorship, you needed to contact the Clerk's Office. Is there a thought or discussion on wanting to keep that the same, change it, amend it, alter it, anything like that? Because I know this came up at the last meeting. Yes, please.
So I think I was.
Yes, yeah, you were. Yeah, please.
I think now that we're back in regular session, it should not be assumed. That the council person signs onto legislation, particularly when they were unable to ask questions publicly. Um, for their constituents' benefits. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Councilwoman Freeman.
I, I agree. Um, I think that the assumed sponsors, sponsorship was useful during COVID because. People were forgetting to sponsor legislation and then nothing was getting off the ground. Um, but I do think that. Now, since we, we have to have a quorum, you know, there. Theoretically going to be at least four council people at each meeting. Um, I, I would prefer to go back to. Sign onto it, and then if you're absent at a meeting, you can contact the clerk to sign onto the legislation. Um, now that we're back in person, I, I would prefer to go back to the old way as well.
Especially with the sign in sheets, I would agree.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Resonetti. Councilman Scanlon. Okay, all right. So Madam Clerk, from here going forward, we'll go back to pre-COVID. Um. We'll contact if we want to have a name added to it and the other way around, to an RL and not the other way around. Excellent. Thank you for the input. Any other discussion? Councilman Scanlon. I would like to recognize you for a motion, sir. Do I have a second? Okay, motion of my Council. Seconded by Councilwoman Resonetti. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.